We begin, beginning of Lawrence City Commission. First on the agenda tonight, we have a proclamation proclaiming May 2012 as Older Americans Month. So if someone here received that proclamation, please come forward, state your name, and also a little bit about your organization.
My name is Tina Roberts. I'm with Douglas County Senior Services. Older Americans Month is a perfect opportunity to show our appreciation for the older adults in our community. Since 1963, communities across the nation have joined in the annual commemoration of Older Americans Month, a proud tradition that shows our nation's commitment to celebrating contributions and achievements of older Americans. The theme for Older Americans Month 2012 is Never Too Old to Play. It puts a spotlight on the important roles older adults play in sharing their experience, wisdom, and understanding, and passing on that knowledge to other generations in a variety of significant ways. While Douglas County Senior Services provides services, support, and resources to older Americans year-round, Older Americans Month is a great opportunity to show special appreciation to some of our most beloved citizens. We have very many reasons to celebrate them.
I'll read the proclamation for you at this time. Whereas Douglas County is a community that includes citizens aged 60 and older, and whereas the older adults in Douglas County are the roots from which our community grows, who bestow gifts of wisdom and insight upon younger generations and strengthen the bonds between neighbors to create a better place to live. Whereas our society can be enhanced by older Americans acting peacefully in their communities, and whereas the older adults in Douglas County should be commended for their role in creating and bolstering the fiber of our community and nation. And whereas our community can provide that recognition and respect by enriching the quality of life for older Americans, by increasing their opportunities to remain in their communities as active and engaged citizens, providing services, technologies, and support systems at all seniors to foster and maintain connections within the community, and emphasizing the value of elders by publicly recognizing their contributions to the diversity, strength, and unity of our community. Now therefore, I, Robert J. Shum, one of them, and mayor of the city of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2012 as Older American Months. Congratulations. Okay. Okay. Take care of all the older folks here. And the next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. All matters listed below on the Consent Agenda are considered under one motion and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on those items. If any discussion is desired, then that item can be removed by one of the commissioners or one of the members of the public. Any commissioner wish to remove any item on the Consent Agenda?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay. Just a minute, please.
Number 10.
Number 10. Okay. Is there any item on the Consent Agenda that a member of the public would like to remove? Yes, sir.
Number 7.
Number 7. Okay. Number 7 and number 10 are removed from the Consent Agenda for individual discussion. In addition to the remaining on the Consent Agenda, I'd like to add to the Consent Agenda payroll, pay payroll in the amount of $1,842,140.75, as well as the claims to vendors totaling 187 claims for $2,821,566.63. Do I hear a motion to approve the Consent Agenda less item number 7 and 10?
You do.
Move.
Second.
Amix Cromwell, age before beauty. Okay. Moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Carries 4-0. Okay. Item number 7 first. Okay. Adopt on first reading ordinance number 8727 authorizing a grant to the Bio Science and Technology Center for the economic development purposes in the amount not to exceed $500,000 and issue general obligation bounds to pay for the costs authorized by the City Commission on 4/17/12.
Hubbard Collinsworth, I have a question. Is there any statistics that somebody could supply me with actual employment rates that we've chelled out to the Bioscience Authority by the city just itself? That's my main question. I want to know how many jobs we've created for what we've spent in the last several years on the biosciences.
Okay. We might not have that right at the fingertip, or does staff have an answer for that right now?
I don't have that right now, but we'd be happy to pull that together.
Okay. If you'll leave where we can get that information to you, we'll get it and make sure you...
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else on this item? Commission discussion?
Mayor, Commissioner Amix pointed out that Laverne Squire is in the room.
Laverne Ep.
I'm sorry, Laverne Ep. Laverne Squire. Laverne Ep is in the room, and he might be able to shed some light on the city's contribution to the Bioscience Authority and perhaps a little bit about the jobs created from that so we can move this forward tonight.
Agreed.
Squire. That's a name from the past, eh? Thank you. How can I... What specific questions, Clint, can I ask?
The first question from Hubbard was the total contribution to date by the city of Lawrence to the Bioscience effort.
The city has made a number of different levels of contribution. One, about five years ago, the city took action to provide funding on an annual basis to the operations of the Bioscience and Technology Business Center, and that's $200,000 a year. Then when we, several years ago, approached the city for capital funding for a specific project, which is the Bioscience and Technology Business Center, which is the incubator facility on West Campus, the city committed $1 million to that project, which it is paying over a 10-year period. Recently, we approached the city and asked for a contribution to the capital fund for Phase 2 of the incubator inasmuch as Phase 1 is fully occupied, and the city again committed $1 million to that effort. This contribution is coming in over a period of several years rather than 10 years. So let me think, probably to date, the city has probably put in somewhere between $1 million and $1.5 million in total cost to that effort.
To date?
Yes, I think so. I don't remember exactly what year the $200,000 payment began, but it comes in over a period of 10 years. Then the additional $1 million that the city committed to the Phase 1 project is also coming in over 10 years. And so it's...
It's over $1 million, I know, and I think it's between $1 and $1.5 million.
I think that's correct.
That's the total amount so far.
I can be more specific if I had the budgets in front of me.
And then if I may, the second question was about the number of jobs that the effort has contributed to the economy thus far.
Right. In the last several years, we have recruited 16... We have either formed or created or recruited to Lawrence 16 companies that were not here prior to that time. And among all those companies, the jobs, I don't have an exact number today, but the total job creation is somewhere between 80 and 100 jobs from those early-stage companies.
And the average... I know we had a report a week or two ago, the average salary range for those jobs...
It's around $70,000.
Okay. So would you say $7 million of payroll possibly?
Probably between 6 and 7.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions?
That helpful?
Yes, thank you.
Sure does. Thank you for being here. Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? I'd entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 8727 on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Moved. Amix, second. Dever. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or approve. Item number 10. Approve a route change in the public transit service with the changes being implemented in August of 2012.
West Hills, Robert Lewis, 1105 West Hills Parkway. We have bus coming up Emery and going down Emery, turning on to Stratford over to West Campus Drive. An average of 711, according to the transportation people, a day. Thirty-two buses each way, that's 64 buses. Many of those buses have one, two, or none on the buses. They're primarily in the morning and late afternoon. They're being hard on Stratford. Chuck Soles has admitted that because it's tearing up the street, these heavy buses. They're also hogging the street, going around the curves at the north end of Emery towards Ninth, and when they come around the corner from Ninth onto Emery, they take up much of the intersection getting onto Emery. It's a 48-foot bus, and if we're going to continue on Emery and on Stratford, let's have a 35-foot bus instead of the 48-foot bus. Lighter, safer on the street. And in the meantime, another problem has evolved up in Stratford that I think you need to be aware of. That's happened in the last year or two. That is students walking on the south side of Stratford, also in the street, texting. And you should see the number of near accidents because they're not watching where they're walking. It's just waiting to happen.
Thank you. We have a staff person here. Would you like to respond to that route change, please?
Yeah, I'm Bob Nugent. I'm with Public Transit Department of the city. The area he's talking about is served by the KU service. That's Route 36 that actually operates across Emery and Stratford. They are carrying about 1,000 passengers a day, is my understanding. Yeah, I... This gentleman did call me, I referred that to KU's Parking and Transit, I don't know, several months ago, for them to investigate. So that's really all I know about the situation up in that general area, so...
How does our action tonight reflect what his route is? Is the KU takes care of their placement of their own routes?
Yeah.
We do our own, and then the ones that overlap, we have confirmation...
Yeah, what I usually bring to the commission is the city portion of what we're doing for the community. So the university routes, they've already made a determination on what they're going to do with their routes. So we actually have two different bodies that are making decisions on the service for the community. So what I'm bringing to you tonight is just the city portion of it and the combined service is what I'm...
Which is not...
The rest in the memo actually says it's for informational use only, or I think that's how I worded it.
So route this gentleman's talking about is not in our package?
It is in our package, but it's already been approved by the KU process, so...
Any questions?
Yeah, I had a question to ask Bob. In your memo, you highlighted some of the changes to the routes and some additional costs associated with those changes. By my accounting, it was around $300,000. Can you summarize those changes, the cost increases, and where those fees are going to come from?
Yeah. The cost increases, one is the Route 2. Now, when the university went through their process of determining what routes they were going to do some planning on and to try to improve, they looked at Route 32. Route 32, if you get this picture in your mind, it runs from North Michigan, basically through campus and ran clear down to Alabama, Louisiana, 25th Street, and kind of did a loop and came back. When they were looking at their routes, and of course, they look at their routes in a whole different perspective than we do, they look at such volume of passengers over a short period of time. That segment of the route had the lowest ridership of any route in their system. So they decided, in order to use their resources in other places, which they were wanting to put service in the southwest portion of town, they were wanting to glean some of that resource out of the southern portion of that route and put it toward the southwest, which there's a high potential for ridership in that general area. So by doing that, we did have a lot of comments. We do a joint public meeting process with the university. We did have a lot of comments on that southern portion disappearing. And the area down there is low to moderate income, some low to moderate income apartments, a lot of international students and stuff that live in that general area. So the city kind of stepped in and said, "Well, you know, that is a good base kind of ridership. That represents a lot of what our ridership is. Why can't we do something? And if nothing else, that'll give us some time to figure out if it's worthy of keeping service there or not." Then we looked at connecting that with Haskell Indian Nations. I've been here three years, and I know there's been a lot of conversation about connecting Haskell Indian Nations to KU's main campus so they could do some work between the two institutions. So we designed a route that would go from Haskell Indian Nations through that area of Alabama, Louisiana, 25th to campus. And our only commitment from the city's perspective is we're going to do that for 160 days, and that's basically when we know those trips would be needed. So that's Route number 2. Route number 6, we're actually adding going from 40-minute service on Route 6 to half-hour service, and how we're doing that, we're adding another bus into that mix, so we're going to have two buses on that route. Part of the cost of that additional bus on that, we're pulling one additional peak bus off of Route 5, which was serving East Hills Industrial Park through to 31st and Iowa. We're pulling that bus off, we're putting those extra dollars we're saving from pulling that peak bus off onto Route 6, and that will give us half-hour service all day. Route 6, the ridership has been continuing to grow. We think by adding another bus to it and improving the level of service and reducing that frequency, that we'll get some more ridership out of it. Where the 5, the peak hour service, really didn't show us much additional ridership, so we looked at it as maybe being a wash for these additional resources. And then Route 19, which is the coordinated route with the university, and I talked to you about the 32 and how they pulled the southern portion of 32 off. Our commitment to the 32 is basically one bus. We're paying for one out of the three buses. They've pulled two buses basically out of their other service to put it in there. The potential ridership in the southwest area, if you've watched any of our numbers and our ridership, Route 11, which was our first coordinated route, has been highly successful. It's one of the highest ridership routes we have in, basically in the city. The potential ridership, at least the number of beds, and you know there's a lot of high-density in the southwest corridor, the potential ridership down there is higher than it is in the 11th corridor. So that's one of the reasons why we would like to get some service out there, and by pulling some resources together, we were able to do that. So that's the three areas where we're spending the money. $100,000 on Route 2, $100,000 on Route 19, and then the rest of that would be out of Route 6. And was there another portion of that that I didn't...
Well, so it says, "Funding yet to be determined on, for example, Route 19 on the map," but in the attached memo, it indicates the amount of money that would be required. So where is that money coming from as far as our budget goes?
Comes out of the tax referendum dollars. One of the things that we heard loud and clear with the tax referendum is people wanted transit to stay, and they want to see improvements in transit. What we've done over the last few years, and I've said this a number of times, we've kind of built the skeleton, we've moved the skeleton around, now we're starting to put some meat on the bone to see what kind of ridership we can get out of this. And that's what this is about. We have some money that we're not spending out of the tax referendum. That's the .2 dollars, that's not the .05 equipment dollars, that we can put into things like that and then see how it works. That's the intention anyway.
So there's excess dollars coming from the tax referendum that we have access to and are planning on using?
Yeah, we're running within budget, for sure.
Okay. Because that wasn't really indicated in the memo. I just wanted to make sure that funding was sustainable level and we'd be able to continue that.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you. Public comments? Commission discussion? Entertain a motion to approve the proposed routes?
Mayor, I move to approve item 10, approving the route changes to the public transportation service.
Moved, Dever.
Second.
Second, Cromwell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries 4-0. Next item on the agenda is the city manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Just a very brief report for you this evening. The city manager wanted you to be aware that unfortunately, we were not successful in getting the FEMA grant that we'd applied for under the Assistant to Firefighter Grant for fire medical station video conferencing, but we will continue to seek resources for that for the fire medical department.
Any questions? Thank you for the staff report. Now, under the regular agenda, just a reminder that when we have public comment, you're allowed five minutes. At four and a half minutes, I'm going to ring this little chime, and that's to remind you that you need to kind of wrap up, and at five minutes, I'm going to ask you to please be seated, so try to get everybody up and listen to them and have plenty of time to make decisions. First on the regular agenda is to consider adopting 2012 Action Plan and Investment Summary of the 2018-12 Consolidated Plan, and consider adopting Resolution Number 6974.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. I'm Donnell Dressler, and I'm the Management Analyst in the Community Development Division of Planning and Development Services, and I'll actually be covering both sections of Agenda Item 1 for you tonight. We'll talk about the Action Plan first. The city is required to submit either a consolidated plan or an action plan to HUD every year regarding the CDBG and home programs. And this year's submission for the Action Plan will be the fifth and final year of our five-year consolidated plan, which ran from 2008 to 2012. And the Action Plan discusses housing and community development needs and priorities for the community, and then the investment summary details how we have determined the funding recommendations to meet those needs. Priorities are determined by both the assessment of needs and the completion of prior activities. The Community Development Advisory Committee, or the CDAC, makes the recommendations for CDBG and home programs with input from other citizen advisory boards, the public census data, homeless counts, and also under a direction from the City Commission. As previously approved by the City Commission, the Advisory Committee continued to consider the step-up to better housing strategy when it determined its funding allocations for this year. The Advisory Committee held a public hearing on April 12, and that opened up the 30-day written comment period for the Action Plan and the Investment Summary. Several citizens did attend the public hearing and provided comments to the committee, and those have been reflected in the Action Plan draft that you guys have. And to date, we have not received any written comment. In the past years, we have had to estimate what CDBG and home funding we had to work with, but this year, we were lucky in that we knew what the actual allocation was before we started the deliberations, so that made it easier for the committee to know exactly what they were looking at. For the 2012 program year, the local CDBG allocation was approximately the same as last year's allocation from HUD, and the home allocation was cut by about 35 percent. Last year, the CDBG funding seemed like it was more because we did have reallocation from previous years, grant funds that were rolled over from projects that came in under budget, or projects that didn't go through for one reason or another. So we successfully spent that money this year, so we just have what the government gave us this year to work with. So the final numbers for CDBG were $758,640, and home was $396,213, so we were working with approximately $1.2 million. It's important to note that on federal, by federal regulation, there are expenditure caps on several of the items for CDBG and home. No more than 15 percent of the CDBG grant can be used for public service activities, so those are going to be your neighborhood activities, your social services, those types of things. Administration is capped at 20 percent for CDBG and 10 percent for home. And then we also do have our Community Housing Development Organization, which is tenants to homeowners locally. They are capped at receiving 5 percent of the home allocation as operating expenses. And the allocations, as recommended this year, do fall within all of those caps, and there's actually no cap for the capital improvement projects. Additionally, the Community Housing Development Organization is to receive a minimum of 15 percent of the home funding for their community development projects. That is not a cap, that is the minimum, so... The next step in the process for the Action Plan would be adoption of the resolution authorizing the submission of the CDBG and home Action Plan, Investment Summary, and all related grant documents. Also on the agenda is the adoption of an update to the Citizen Participation Plan. As part of both the CDBG and home programs, the city is required to have a Citizen Participation Plan in place, and the purpose of the plan is to encourage and ensure full and proper citizen participation in all aspects of the consolidated planning process. This is to involve citizens in determining the objectives, the funding decisions, everything having to do with these grants. The Citizen Participation Plan lists out the structures, procedures, roles, and policies to be followed for the program participation. The CDAC recently has had some discussions regarding this document because it had not been updated since 2008, with the exception of some changes for when the department merged, when Planning and Development Services merged, and then also when the board itself had a new name. So they looked at some of the guidelines that were listed in there, and they have a few recommendations to update this. One of them is that for CDBG-funded neighborhood associations, the recommendation is that if someone's going to serve on the board or be an officer for the neighborhood, that they own property or live in the neighborhood. Additionally, they have recommended some residency requirements for CDBG-paid coordinators. And also, if a neighborhood association's bylaws change, they are required to turn those into the Community Development Division within 90 days. Other than that, there were some other minor wording updates. We added some website information because that wasn't in there from 2008. And then we also updated the procedure calendar, which just basically outlines the grant year, when the applications come out, how the whole process works. For this portion, the next step in this process is adoption of the 2012 updated CDBG Home Citizen Participation Plan. The chair of the CDAC was David Texera, and he is present, and we want to thank him and the Advisory Committee for their efforts in the allocation process, as well as in updating the Citizen Participation Plan document. Margine Swartz, Assistant Director of Planning and Development Services, is also here, and will be happy to answer any questions, and I think David has a few things to say.
Good evening, Dave Texera. Just real quick, from an administrative perspective, we filled all open seats on the board. Last year, we had a few open spots, and as Dave mentioned, we updated the Citizen Participation Plan. From a recommendation perspective, you know, as already stated, we had more requests than funds, so it was a challenging process, but we did have a predetermined allocation per category, that being public service, capital improvement, and housing projects. We then, within each one of those categories, had a thoughtful discussion about how to allocate funds for proposals within each one of those categories, and we got all done through it. It was difficult, but we do believe we had a fair and balanced approach and came up with the best decisions possible. So that is my brief summary. Any questions or comments?
No questions.
Dave, on the request that you had, were they exceptionally higher this year than they had been in recent years?
I wouldn't say exceptionally higher, no. I think I'd have to actually ask staff if they're any different, but you know, I think we probably were maybe a little bit flat in terms of total requests asked, but the funds available were declined.
That's right.
Any questions? Okay.
Thank you all.
So how many hours did the committee have in the deliberations on the summary investment?
Well, within public time, maybe as a group, we met, shoot, sorry.
About three months. We started...
About, what, once a month?
Twice.
Twice a month, so one hour each, so seven, eight hours. But that's as a group, obviously. Individuals spend time ahead of time to prep and be ready for the discussion.
Make sure that you send our thanks for everybody's hard work on our behalf.
I will echo that at our next meeting.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thanks for all your effort and all your good work. Any member of the public wish to comment? Okay. Commission discussion? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 6974.
So moved.
Second.
Moved. Amix, second. Cromwell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We need to... Okay. So then additionally, I'd entertain a motion to receive the 2012 Action Plan as well as the Citizen Participation Plan.
Moved.
Cromwell?
Second.
Amix? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries 4-0. All right. Next on the agenda is to receive a letter from the Chamber of Commerce regarding a proposed partnership between the city of Lawrence, Douglas County, and the Lawrence Chamber of Commerce. of Commerce.
Good evening, Mayor Shum, Vice Mayor Dever, and fellow City Commissioners. To our fellow citizens attending tonight's City Commission meeting, thank you for your commitment to our community. You are what makes Lawrence such a great place to live, work, play, and learn. My name is John Ross. I am here as the Chairman of the Board of Directors for the Lawrence Chamber of Commerce. And for the past 21 years, I have owned a locally-owned office equipment company called Laser Logic. I'd like to thank Mayor Shum and former Mayor Cromwell, along with County Commissioner Thelman, for working so closely with the Chamber leadership on retooling our public-private partnership to create more jobs in Lawrence and Douglas County. This organization is structured to attract primary jobs to our community, jobs that bring new people and new money to Lawrence and Douglas County. We're very excited about what the future holds and the successes we will build upon as we work together to provide opportunities to our citizens. Our incoming President and CEO, Greg Williams, has 25 years of experience in attracting new business to a community while helping local businesses grow and expand. He has spent his career creating and retaining local jobs. Those jobs benefit our community by helping to provide the resources that serve those who most need help in our community. The letter we are presenting for your consideration represents a collaboration of public, private, and educational interest, working together for the benefit of our community. Past Chamber Chair Cindy Ulich and Vice Chair Doug Gomer have worked tirelessly to build a structure that will enhance our ability to attract new business and jobs that are a good fit for our community. We have also had input from several people at the University of Kansas and the support of Chancellor Bernadette Gray Little. This model will serve us well. The presence and participation of our elected officials, County Administrator and City Manager, were well-received last week when a new prospective employer came to visit Lawrence. The company representatives made a point of saying how impressed they were by the demonstration of support and teamwork they experienced in working with officials from Lawrence, Douglas County, and the Chamber. In closing, I'd like to thank City Manager Dave Corlison, County Administrator Craig Weinog, for their collaboration and support on this proposed structure. We appreciate their time, efforts, and insights as we work through the interview process to hire our new Chamber CEO. We believe the new structure is a true public-private partnership that will help provide more opportunities to the city and county alike. And if it's okay, before we entertain questions, I'd like to ask our interim CEO Hank Booth to come to the podium as well.
Thank you, John, and I wanted to second all of that that I can and say thank you to the Commissioners present and Commissioner Carter, who is not here tonight, for continuing to help us in finding the right direction for this economic development aggressive initiative. I would point out, and I think it's very important to say, we've already worked in partnership in many ways. And that includes on those projects that are shown, and the success is shown in this year's 2011 Report on Tax Abatements and Economic Development in Cities, prepared by Britt Crum Cano, the Coordinator of Economic Development for the City of Lawrence. And she's been of great assistance in many occasions, along with other city staff members. It has been a teamwork effort in the past, but now, I think that as we go forward, the concept of building both companies that exist today in our community and creating new primary jobs with companies coming into Lawrence and into Douglas County is really going to be benefited by the teamwork approach that's set out in this plan of action. Again, thank you for your support in this effort, and we'd like to answer any questions that you might have at this time to take back to further our discussion on the development of the Council.
Any questions for Mr. Booth or Mr. Ross?
Question about primary jobs and where we're heading that way. Could I have definition? Is that going to be more industrial? Is it going to be anything other than retail? What type of jobs do you envision here?
You know, it's an interesting question that you ask, Commissioner Amick. There are a number of definitions on primary jobs. One of them that seems to have struck a popular chord is a head of household job. So it doesn't necessarily designate a particular industry, as you were referring to, but it more refers to the type of job that supports a family. So that is one definition of primary jobs that we've been looking at.
I'd add that it certainly has been a part of our partnership, and we've been at the table with Laverne Ep, who's here present tonight, as you know, with the Bioscience and Technology Business Center, and helping as we can in that particular effort. So the job is the widest possible range, those that are in the incubator stage to those established firms in our community now, and those who want to come and look as the one did last week.
Questions? We might have more questions for you after the public comment part.
Sure. Excellent. Thank you very much.
Open it up now to public comment. Please come in and come up, sign in, state your name, and tell us what you want us to hear.
My name's Gwen Klingenberg, and I'm the President of the Lawrence Association and Neighborhoods. I truly appreciate the League's letter because I have, and the land has, several similar questions. For instance, especially the policy, established policy to support thoughtful, positive growth. I have to admit, this is the same question I have. What do we mean by the policies? Is the public being taken out of the policy? When they talk about they've had public involvement, I don't think several of the major organizations that are involved in economic development and are concerned about it have been invited to the table. I guess one of them that I have the biggest question on, since I know other people will be here for other things, and the League's already done this, they haven't talked about this one. The Joint Economic Development Council, you have, they have, or somebody has listed the City Administration of Udora and Baldwin as strictly ex-officials. So is that saying that since the three top executive member people are the City Manager, the County Administrator, and the Chamber CEO, that this group is going to be telling Baldwin's Chamber and their community what's going to happen? Don't they have anything to say other than just being an ex-official? I think I have a concern about that. I know, based on the land list serve and the letter that I sent out earlier that wasn't on the land list serve, that there is a big concern about the number of Chamber people on the Joint Economic Development Council, but not other public people. And I guess we also have a concern why the City Manager or the County Manager, even the City and County Heads, the City Mayor, and so forth. And all of our other boards, like the Planning Commission, who is on the board is decided by those people, not by the fact that the Chamber gets to pick the three representatives from the business community pointed by the Chamber President. So I think, yeah, I think there's a great idea. I think there's some good things. I know that we are concerned about economic development. I know that I was told that primary jobs were not retail, retail was secondary, because primary jobs bring people to a community, secondary jobs support the people. So does that mean now that just about everybody sitting up there, barber, restaurant, so forth, your primary job or your secondary job? Because we do have different definitions, and I would really like to know that we settle on one, because it makes a big difference if we're going to be pushing mostly warehouses and part-time jobs. Because if you look at our record for the last several years, we pushed a lot of part-time waitstaff, hotel staff, warehouse jobs. Those jobs provide monies that cannot afford to live in the community, so there's not household. And what happens is we provide those monies, but it leaves town. It's not just the legends, the reason why our money's going out of town. Also, the kinds of jobs we're providing here, and we need them. I don't say we don't. But we also need a lot more of the others. In percentage-wise, we are getting a lot more of the other kind of jobs that we've been supporting, and not enough of what I thought primary jobs were. So are we going to be pushing particular types? Are we going to be picking what the community thinks is what we want? Is it just this small group of people, basically the Chamber, and some government officials that are going to determine what the community wants? And I think we still need to ask the question, where does Udora and Baldwin and Lee Compton fit in in this discussion? Thank you.
Thank you, Gwen. Additional comments?
My name is Candace Davis. I live in the Orea neighborhood. And I'm really here tonight just as an average person. And I will say that this proposal is confusing. And, you know, and I don't want to say that it's not a great idea, because I really don't know. But I would say that there are a lot of mixed feelings about the Chamber activity, and there are a number of citizens, me included, that are concerned about the amount of money that has gone to the Chamber. We feel that there's a lot of city money that could be going other places. And I believe there's also somewhat of a climate of mistrust among some of the citizens where the high-dollar interests of developers seem to override some of the citizen concerns. Also, I'm aware that a number of small business people don't feel adequately represented by the Chamber. And I recall a former Chamber employee who made a point of saying that existing small businesses were really those that most impacted the city. And it's usually best, and apparently there was research that showed when you support your own small businesses in expanding, that it really came back to the community. So my general understanding of the Chamber is that it's an organization that the county and the city contracts for services, or at least utilizes or pays for a lot of the services. So I would see them as the city is the employer, the Chamber is the employee. The city, I believe, has the overall or overarching goal of the health and welfare of the entire community, so that focus is broad. The Chamber, however, has a very narrow focus. So to my mind, to have a vibrant, healthy city is dependent on really good planning now and in the future. And I believe here, in a university town, we have every opportunity to get good information about urban and city planning. So I would hope that the city is using unbiased resources and facts to support the planning decisions that are made. So is the project not only good for the applicant, but more importantly, is it good for the community? So I believe good planning needs to safeguard the jewel of our city, which is the downtown. But also, I think we need to address the infrastructure and maintenance as well as growing our economy. And I also think that really good planning involves some public input. And I wanted to tell you just a brief story. I'm looking at the clock, and it's just a nice story about a young woman from Switzerland that came to the St. Patrick's Day Parade with a small group of people, and she was so excited about our parade. And she said, "Oh, my gosh, you Americans love your parades." And I was thinking, "Yeah, I guess Lawrence loves parades." But I was trying to think, could you imagine a parade in Manhattan, Kansas, or Topeka, Kansas, or Oak Park Mall, or 119th Street in Kansas City? And I thought, "Thank God, we have a downtown that we can celebrate like this." So please keep in mind who exactly is directing the planning of our city when you think of economic growth and development. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Additional comments?
My name's John Tuttle. I wasn't so much a comment as a question, as to clarify what this lady just said about the Chamber of Commerce receiving funding from the city. Is that true?
Yes.
How does that get allocated to them?
If you will just ask your questions, and then after you're done, we'll try and answer as much of that as possible, please. So the first question was, do they receive money from the city? And your second question was, how does it get allocated?
Yeah, how is that decided?
You have any other questions, then?
Waiting for the answer on that one.
They receive from the city a little over $200,000 a year. It was decided in a budgetary process last year. I don't know about the years prior to that, I wasn't here.
Same process.
Same process. So Mike was here.
And all of the Chamber are made up of members of the business community?
I think there's several other members, several other members that are not maybe the business community so much. They may be in the service community, they may be in the nonprofit sector. It's a wide variety of people throughout the City of Lawrence. I don't know exactly the breakdown of what professions and what businesses they represent.
Okay. Because I kind of sense there might be some strong conflicts of interest going on here. And also, I do have the same issue as she voiced concern about the word "policy" and its use in this document, which I haven't viewed. But I mean, what exactly does that mean? It's a valid question.
I'm sure we'll get to that question later in our Commission discussion. We will.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name's Katie Walsh. I just had a brief comment. I noticed that there wasn't a representative from Haskell Indian Nations University named in the newspaper, so I was hoping that we would remember there's two universities in Lawrence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Marguerite Ermeling. I'll sign it afterwards, it's really long. I don't really know what has preceded me up here, and I don't want to duplicate anything. But I think it's been a long-minded project in the community about people who've had to either contend with issues in their areas, wherever they be. But the thoughts behind most of the public that I have had an opportunity to deal with was to really have professional economic advisors, true economic, taught, educated as such, to be a part of what we really depend on in order to form policy here, et cetera, and to help us design the goals as a community, as was mentioned before, in a much broader perspective than individual, isolated, particular thoughts and ideas. And I speak also coming from an area that isn't in the city at all, but has been consumed in a plan that the city has placed upon us. And that all really came out of a singular and very finite area propagated certainly by a portion of the Chamber. And while I used to be a member of the Chamber as a membership, I also will say that I think that most of the times in my limited experience with any commission or involvement here has always been with talking, usually against the issues brought up by the Chamber, not because I don't agree with the foundations of needing to grow and expand this community, but more from the standpoint that when, if asked, the Chamber that representatives that have often come here have not been necessarily reflective of all of that membership and the wide diversity that they do have in back, but very much a small, tiny part of that group. And so oftentimes, when I speak to people who are currently members of the Chamber, they have no idea of what's going on, and they don't even know that they've been addressed with an opportunity to formulate an opinion on that. So I think sometimes... So I think sometimes when we hear the Chamber of Commerce, it really isn't the bulk of the Chamber of Commerce necessarily. It is parts and pieces, smaller reflections of that, and maybe perhaps a very focused group. And so, as a city grows together and tries to expand and come up with the best opportunities, it seems that those ideas and those notices need not only Chamber input, but it needs a much wider, more diverse public input, almost like the 1990 group effort to put together a Horizon 2020. It's, what is it that this community could use best and not just taking what is offered? It is the design, and I think the purpose of commissions, and certainly the Planning Department itself, to use the very best and current best-practice knowledge that comes out of the Association for Planning on a national level. Those things need to come to our community. I'm hopeful that, in fact, that will happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments?
Mayor, Commissioners, I'm Kirk McClure. The goals of economic development are laudable. They're something we all want. We want our economy to grow. To offer an economist's answer to Commissioner Amix's question, a primary job is any job that sells a good or service outside the local economy. We know that an economy only grows to the extent you sell goods and service outside. If you recirculate dollars that are already in the economy, there's no growth. For it to be economic development, it has to be a primary job taken by a worker from inside the economy. If you develop a job that is taken by a worker who moves in, again, you lose the benefits. Economic development is to sell goods and services outside the community, hiring workers inside the community. That's how you grow an economy. We're all in favor of that. Unfortunately, there are thousands of economic development agencies throughout the United States. Everybody is in competition in this game. Because everybody's in competition, the winners will be those who know how to play the game well. That means we need to do two things: professionalize and foster inclusion. Professionalization is crucial, given the highly competitive nature of economic development. This has been going on for decades. The Urban Renewal Program, the first economic development program in the U.S., was created in 1949. That's how long we've been actively working as municipal governments in this area. There are decades of research of what works and what doesn't work, why it works in one place, doesn't work in another. If we don't learn that research carefully, we won't win. That's why we offer advanced degrees in public administration, economic development planning. The Chamber record is not good. It is not an organization that avails itself of that research and guides the city accordingly. In fact, we just heard today the tax abatement report cited as evidence. I spent six years on the Public Incentives Review Committee in this town. Of the tax abatements, we had only 35% met the standards of the Tax Abatement Agreement. That means 65% of them either were not in compliance, failed to report, or the business closed down completely. That's not a record of success, that's a record of failure. Yet the Chamber fought us tooth and nail every time we tried to find mechanisms to look into the performance of the program. The only way you can succeed is knowing what works, why it works, and being very, very careful to structure your own programs so that you are using the right kinds of resources to make things work in your own community. The most important point about the current structure is that it is institutionalizing exclusion. There are no neighborhood representatives in this council. There are no citizen representatives in this council. It's carefully set up so the Chamber members and the Chamber staff have a voting majority on this council. There is no place for input by neighborhood organizations, no place for input by citizens. This council is doing everything it can to solidify power within the Chamber. The Chamber's an advocacy group. There's nothing wrong with being an advocacy group. The Sierra Club is an advocacy group for the environment. We don't pay the Sierra Club to do our environmental planning. The Lawrence Preservation Alliance is an advocacy group for historic preservation, but we don't spend taxpayers' dollars on them to have them carry out our historic preservation planning. Yet we spend scarce taxpayer dollars on the Chamber, an organization that is very clearly a business advocacy group to carry out our economic development planning. They are not doing a good job. They have misled this Chamber. Two of you were on the Chamber when, in fact, you were led into an illegal executive session. You were censured for that. That's the kind of record that ought to say to you, it's time to search for new professional inclusionary leadership in economic development planning. If you pass such a proposal as this, one, look to professionalize it. Bring the skills of professional economic development planners to bear so that they can bring the newest, best, cutting-edge research to bear on your decisions, and make sure that you include citizen input and neighborhood input. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments?
Good evening. My name is Carrie Lindsay. I'm the current president of the League of Women Voters. I understand we have a popular, well-written letter so that it can be quoted by many. I would like to say a couple of things. The letter sort of speaks for itself. But I wanted to note that the first paragraph of the letter thanks the city and county for undertaking this initiative. I think that having a city and county partnership with the Chamber makes the process more accountable. There are some unanswered questions that I think are valid. The League is very much about transparency and how we make this process open. But I will also state that the Chamber has frequently asked the League to participate in activities related to economic development. And so, and I have been part of many meetings, in fact, where neighborhood associations were also invited to those meetings. And so I don't necessarily think that the organizations have been shut out of the past policies. What I do like about this initiative is it is the opportunity to move forward, away from the stories of the past, towards a future where we can do some job creation that is highly needed in this community. I think the process should be transparent. I think the questions that we ask in our letters should be addressed. Can this body enter into contracts? What will, you know, the requirements be? I think it's also important that they are, you know, given information about the Open Meetings Act so that we don't make the same mistakes that we've made in the past. So, again, I appreciate you taking the time to listen to us. If you have any questions about our concerns, I would be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Yeah, I want to thank you for getting us this letter today. It's a very well-written letter, and it really does present some real honest concerns in some areas that we need to make sure we all are in agreement with. One of the things, just that the theme thus far has been that there's little citizen participation, or there's not access to this negotiating table, or whatever you want to call it. But one of the reasons that we put two elected officials on, one from the county and one from the city, is for that very reason, so that people have access to their elected official. And I was hoping that that would be a sufficient amount of opportunity to participate. But, I mean, I think people are forgetting that the elected officials are there for everyone's contacts, so...
And I think that that part of the accountability, I mean, one of the things that Kirk mentioned was that he had sat on a task force. And a task force full of private citizens has no accountability. You know, they can come back to the body that appointed them and say, "Hey, the process isn't working with the Chamber," but there isn't any accountability there. So in a collaboration wherein you have two city employees, as well as a commissioner from the county and one from the city, provides a much better structure for accountability. And I think, and I hope, that the Chamber understands that as the organizations who are frequently at the table about the businesses and economic development that comes forward, that that is our expectation, and that they should understand that we will be expecting you to partake. There are, you know, actively, and that you will be held accountable to what you do as part of that board. And so, you know, there are a few more items. And I think that having the opportunity to see those be addressed is a valid request. But I think that the effort is a good one. And thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for the Speaker? Thank you very much. Additional comments?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. My name's Ted Boyle, President of North Lawrence Improvement. And I would like to say that I agree with Gwen and Land and Kirk. I believe that there should be more citizen involvement on that committee, board, whatever you want to call it. And I would also like to see the Chamber work as hard to get the small businesses, the mom-and-pop businesses, to come to town because being involved with the North Mass development, the only thing I've heard from downtown is they've got 30-plus vacancies down there that they can't fill. Now, maybe if the Chamber put as much effort into trying to attract smaller businesses to come to downtown, you know, we might get those vacancies filled. But I think we need an even balance of people on this new, exciting board, or committee, or whatever you want to call it. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Boyle. Who else? Okay. Bring it back to the Commission for discussion. Anyone want to leap in there? Okay, Commissioner Amix.
Where do you want to go this evening? Do you want to define all of the things that the questions have been brought up about this evening? Are we going to write policy tonight?
No, I don't see us doing that. I mean, I think we've received a good deal of information here. It's the beginning of trying to hammer out a final package for acceptance. People have spoken about transparency. That's what I am all about. I want complete transparency. I look at this as a fresh start, a new start. Obviously, I think most of the people in this room would agree that our economic development has been lacking in the past. I think by getting the county, the city, KU, the Chamber all at the same table, forming a new venture, a new entity, gives us a little bit of life, hope, and thrill. We were, as John Ross said, we were involved in a recruitment on Thursday. The city, I was there, Commissioner Dever was there, Vice Mayor Dever, Dave Corliss, Diane Stoddart, Craig Weinog, Mike gone, and a number of Chamber people. And it was unbelievable, the operation that we put forth and the goodwill that we created with this recruiter that was there. Someone said at that meeting, they said, "Well, who..." One of the recruiters, one of the specialists that was here in favor, representing the company, said, "Well, who's in charge here?" And the county administrator said, "Well, we all are. We're all in this together, we're doing it together." And a person said, "That's wonderful, that is really a good thing." And from there, the questioning got a lot more specific. So you could tell the tone of the seriousness that had changed when they heard that at the table there were the major entities of the city represented under one group. So, obviously, that was in advance of anything we do here tonight, or if we get it done in the future. But it demonstrated to me how positive and what a positive reaction we can have when we work together. I do think that in the past, we've talked about, instead of talking about us, we've talked about you and them and other, those people over there. And we haven't really unified our effort as well as we can. And I really think it's a great opportunity to do that. That's why I'm doing it. I'm not doing it to circumvent any kind of public process. I'm not doing it for the benefit of any one organization. I'm doing it for the benefit of this city, to move us forward, to get some darn good jobs in here that we desperately need. And they are going to be primary jobs, they're not going to be retail jobs. So, retail will always follow. But, sorry, I'm getting carried away in a speech here, but that's what, the way I've approached it. And just so you all know, that's my feelings on it. I'm going to keep pushing on it till we get the model down that we want to represent us. One of the reasons why we went with this model is because of the success we've had with Laverne Epp and his incubator operation. It's way, it's filled way ahead of time. It's been a relatively ease-of-operation kind of event. I thought, well, if that can work in that kind of scenario, why can't we just transfer that model to this particular economic development activity and move the darn thing forward? So, that's where we're at, that's how we got here. And we've got, obviously, I really appreciate the League giving us these questions to look through and try and come back with good, solid answers. It made me think quite a bit about how much more there is to go yet before we can get to where we need to be. We do want the citizens to feel good about this, and we do want to be successful.
Yeah, I think part of trying to improve our city and our efforts is to identify our flaws or some of our faults and trying to improve on those. I think as a city, we have tried to improve how we attract businesses. We hired an economic development coordinator four years ago and tried to have someone in-house who could evaluate potential opportunities, financial aspects of potential tax abatements, incentives that the city would offer. And that person, who's changed over time, but the current person in that position has done a tremendous job in allowing the city to at least quickly evaluate opportunities. In the past, we didn't even have a way to do that. And I think that was one step forward. And I think most people in the room know this, but for those who don't, you know, our investment in the Chamber is simply as an outsourced economic development tool. We paid them to help us try to recruit businesses to Lawrence. Those dollars that we spent, that are taxpayer dollars, were invested in a group that we believed had the manpower and the staff able to help recruit businesses to Lawrence and to grow the ones that are here. So we've identified some of our faults, and we've tried to improve on them. We've had a pretty poor showing as far as business attraction. I think we've retained our stature. I think we've done a pretty good job in keeping the businesses we have here. But I think we haven't really put our best foot forward when it comes to developing additional jobs, primary jobs, in this community. And I think we need to focus clearly on that goal and have a plan on doing better in the future. This plan was put forth based on, as Bob pointed out, a model where the community gets together and figures out how we're going to get better. The community being all of the people that live in Lawrence, and your elected officials represent those people. We saw that model work at the incubator. I think this model came forth from some ideas, from people at the Chamber, leaders at the Chamber. And the city is a participant in economic development, but only a small participant. The Chamber puts forth many dollars to this effort. And the city's contribution, and hopefully, you know, the county's contribution has helped, you know, at least allow us to compete for the opportunities that have come forward. You know, now we need to figure out how we can make those dollars go further, how we can do better at attracting businesses here and to grow the businesses that are already here, whether they be small businesses or large businesses. We need to be welcoming and try to attract those people to stay and/or to come to our community. So, I think we've identified our failures, which is we haven't grown as a community like we want to. And now this is an action, or a proposed action, that would lead us down a different path. I agree with what some of the people have put forward. I think the council needs to be inclusive. I think having it stacked with a certain type of person, whatever that side of the story is, is not good because you need to get input from all sides of the community. So I think if we can form this council to include various viewpoints, I think that's the most important thing. Whether it's from an academic standpoint, meaning what works on paper, whether it's a real-world experience, people who are actually doing it and in the trenches every day, whether it's people... the trenches every day, whether it's people who lead organizations like the university who will benefit directly from these efforts. Those are the things that we need to kind of bring forward and to have on a team to help put our best foot forward to potential companies and to help those companies that are here, who want to be here, stay and grow. So, I believe that a different approach needs to be taken, and I'm all in favor of moving forward with studying this plan and this proposed layout of how things would go. I have my own concerns as to how this thing would be laid out and who's going to be involved and who they're going to report to. But ultimately, the tax dollars that the city puts forth are the community's tax dollars. And we, as a commission, will obviously have full say in how those dollars are spent. But it needs to be highlighted that the chamber has funded much of this activity in the past. They are the primary funding agent of economic development in Lawrence, and we are a partner in this instance. And in this, from the tax dollar standpoint, we've been paying them to serve as a outsourced service. So, I think we need to, you know, maintain that model, but this is going to create a more, we, as Bob pointed out, a team approach that I think is going to, I think, show well out to potential companies who want to come to Lawrence.
Just, I guess, to start out here, what we have in front of us, a lot of people, you know, have concerns about the proposal and such, and I don't treat this, I don't consider this a proposal. I think what we have in front of us is an invitation to create a proposal, to have our staff work on something, to put it together, to begin the discussion. This isn't the final document that we have in front of us. And so, keep in mind, we have plenty of opportunity here to take a look at this and work through these concerns, and there'll be others that we haven't even talked about this evening that'll come up, and we'll work our way through those. You know, with respect to citizen involvement, we currently do this economic development work right now. There's no citizen involvement. There's no transparency. We give money to the chamber and that's it. There's nothing. This actually helps to solve that problem. This isn't a problem with transparency. This is increased transparency. Maybe we can, there's ways of getting at that even better. But this really represents an incredible improvement over the level of transparency that we currently have with the amount of economic development dollars and who we're talking about bringing in and where those dollars are being spent. Because it's been, as it's been pointed out, the chamber is a business advocacy group. And advocacy and business attraction often come in conflict with each other. For instance, you're wanting to bring in a brand-new solar installation company into Lawrence, Kansas. I can think of somebody who might, you know, object to that, even though if it was great for the town. So, which is it? Is the chamber now representing my interests or is it, you know, is it representing the interests of the city? And that's one thing that by splitting this into two pieces, that you can kind of get at some of those issues, you know. And the chamber doesn't have to come before this body some days and rail against something that we've done, and then the next day says, oh, and thanks for your commitment and the trip to, you know, to learn more about this company is on such and such a time. I hope we're still friends. It's worked out, you know, where we've had a good, we've had a good commission, we've had a good leadership in the chamber. Things have changed over the last years, and that's one thing to remember, too, and that we have had a history in the last half a dozen years, for sure, of drastic improvement in the relationship between the chamber, between the city, between KU, you know, and between the county. All of us are working together. This was a main theme of my talk that, you know, as I was giving the State of the City speech about a month ago tonight, about how well we're all working together. And I believe that this proposal represents an opportunity to add these people that were saying, hey, we're working so great together and your trip there and everybody's together and working. We're going to bring all these people together and really further help attract the businesses to come into Lawrence. They're going to look at us. They're going to see us working together, you know, and that's, I think, a phenomenal opportunity for us to do that. You know, there's a lot of work still yet to be done here, but this absolutely represents an incredible step in the right direction, an incredible step towards increased business development in Lawrence, Kansas, which is critical for us to fund all of the things that we love about our city. And we need to keep marching in the right direction, and we'll examine the problems as we get to them here, and will be plenty of opportunity for public input as we move forward.
Mayor, just real quick, let's go back about 25 years ago, and I think that you and I sat on a similar commission when we talked about establishing the rules as to what the Economic Development Marketing Program would look like. And we put together basically a three-legged stool, and that there were going to be partnership between the city, the county, and the Chamber of Commerce in being able to attract businesses to Lawrence, Kansas. And at that time, I know that there was questions on what that was going to look like. And ever since that time, we've been looking at ways to actually make it better. I think that this proposal does help do that. I think it gives us some opportunity to look at bringing primary jobs to Lawrence, Kansas. And I think it's, that's, you know, our goal right now. We've made a lot of investment of public funds in the development of areas that will establish places for those primary jobs to be developed at. We have made investment in the old farmland site, in increased presence at East Hills Business Park, any number of areas, whether it be with Laverne and the biosciences and just great numbers of places. We are ready for that next area of development and primary jobs to happen. If we are going to put together the proposal and the committee, the Development Council to help carry it out, there has been questions that have come forward. We will take the time in answering these questions. We will make sure that this policy and this council works. The membership, I would imagine the membership, we'll have discussions about that, and the final outcome may look a little bit different as what's recommended right now. But I think that what it does is it gives us the basis of being able to make, you know, our final stamp of approval on this. And I think, I just got to say, thanks to everybody who's been involved in putting this together. I know that there's a lot of hours in trying to come up with a plan that's going to be good for Lawrence, Kansas. And I think that we'll take the time, we'll make sure that our goal here in town is to, and with this policy and this council being put in place, is to make sure that our goal here is, whether it be small business, large business, and make sure that, you know, our goal is primary jobs. That's where we're at. You know, this is not easy. I mean, it's really not. Because the thing that happens is, is that when we're trying to do job development, there's always going to be a difference of opinion on how we do it. I think that my goal here would be, is, as the Vice Mayor said, that the tax dollars that will be spent, it's a responsibility of the governing body. It will remain the responsibility of the governing body. And one of the things that's most important to me in this whole thing is to make sure we're going to follow open meetings law. That is the requirement. And, you know, Tony, I talked to you before the meeting in making sure that we're going to follow that to the T. That is our responsibility as elected officials. And Mayor, I want to thank you because I know that that is something that's so important to you and the other members of this commission, is that the transparency that we have and that we carry out is that people understand. Professor McClure, you talked about hiring professionals to, and bring this as a professional organization. You know, that ought to be our goal, you know, as part of it. We've got to have professionals in help carrying this out. So, there's still work to be done, and we all know it. But I think that this plan that we have before us right now gives us the basis to start talking from and being able to have job creation as our responsibility right now, and especially our number-one responsibility. So, thank you.
May I suggest that we allow staff to tackle some of these questions the chamber, or the League of Women Voters has so nicely presented to us?
Yes.
I think along with those three questions, a strong definition of primary job needs to be developed. I like Professor McClure's very simple-to-understand definition. It may need to be tweaked some, I don't know. The makeup of the board, how that would be finalized, I'd take staff recommendation on that. It's possible we may want to put two city commissioners on there so there's even more access for the public. And there's concern, I know, about the number of chamber people on the board versus non-chamber people, so that maybe changes that equation a little bit as well. So, if the commission feels comfortable with that, we could refer it to staff, try and get as many of these questions handled. Any member of the public that wants to add input to the staff, then you've got that opportunity. And maybe we can get something back in a couple of weeks and proceed from that.
That sounds like a good course action.
Any other concerns you have that you want staff to tackle? But the statement in the chamber letter is, that was one of the speakers mentioned, the partnership will establish policies to support thoughtful, positive growth within our community and create jobs for its residents. I'd kind of like to see a blueprint of that, where we're going with that, and I can understand where that creates some concern amongst the citizens, that it's kind of an open-ended. I have full faith that the group would come up with the right language and the right points to get where we're going, but we could do that upfront, too, and maybe put some people's minds at ease.
Mayor, can I ask, there's some other points and some other communications we've received that I think are asking for, I think, an explanation as to how and why, how the executive committee and how the JEDC, the Joint Economic Development Council, would function, what the responsibilities are. I think that needs to be clarified. But also, the makeup of the JEDC should be clearly laid out, and the advantages and disadvantages from having, say, six potential members of the chamber. Is it based on their financial contribution to the effort? You know, is it based on, is money or dollars dictating voices? And if that's the case, then that becomes troublesome as well. But I would want to make sure that we address the concern over the weight of the council and the breadth of the council as to who should be involved and why. I think just an explanation, this is a great chart, but there's not a lot of supporting documentation clarifying how the author arrived at, you know, at how this membership group has been created. And then also, the executive committee, maybe just a clarification on, you know, how that was arrived at, why that structure is in the way it looks, and how the chamber CEO, whoever that is, now or in the future, how they interact. So, you know, basic structure of the two bodies, and then justification as to their composition.
That's fine. Those are good questions. They were discussed at length. One of the reasons that they wanted to be able to appoint three business people is for what one of the earlier speakers talked about, is expertise in certain fields, like maybe real estate, maybe construction. So, that, in note, it says three business people. It doesn't say three chamber people.
Exactly.
But it may or may not be. But it was to have the opportunity to fill in some of the expertise needs that the committee thought it would need in order to have a full package and complement of people that were able to address a lot of questions. Like the meeting we were at last Thursday or Friday, they asked about soil types and they asked about opportunity for zoning. I mean, it was a lot of different things. There was an architect there that was able to answer soil types and compaction and the amount of capacity that the soil would have. So, I mean, you know, it's things like that that would come up.
Yeah, and I think it's, just as we talked about earlier, CDBG, you know, there are rules about who can and can't participate in certain councils or groups, and if those are clearly lined out, then people won't feel bad if they can't be on something, if there's some clearly laid-out, you know, requirements, like if you have to live in one of the low-to-moderate-income neighborhoods to be a part of it. I mean, there's rules that we should put in place that I think will make it clear to people that we're trying to structure this, not stack the deck, but to weight it carefully across the community.
There's one other thing to keep in mind, too. This is not a CBDG, or it's not a planning commission. It's a private-public partnership. So, it's a little different structure. We want to take the necessary steps to protect the public, for sure, but it is, it's going to have a mix of private monies and hopefully some public monies that are involved. So, it's a little bit different type of structure, and we can work through that for the safeguard of the community. Do you have anything else?
Part of, I think, when we look at the makeup of the board, and, you know, we have concerns in transparency and involvement in all this, you know, the council here. When we talk about that, I think we need to do, we do need to look at where the money is coming from and how much is coming from where, and that's what should guide representation upon that, I mean, on that council. I think that's the point. I mean, obviously, elected officials and report to the people, the county administrator reports to the elected officials, you know, which reports to the people likewise. The county also represents, obviously, you know, Udora and Baldwin are within the county. So, I mean, there's questions, some question there, too. You know, you've got to think about the level of involvement financially and as to makeup here.
But along with that, one of the things that we need to take into consideration, and I think KT brought it up, is like the inclusion of maybe someone from Haskell to be a part of, you know, the organization because we have, you know, another university in town. So, I think as we set this up, if we're going to have, you know, people from the three different organizations that are funding, you know, the new council, then the thing that happens is we've got to find out what that level of additional people who may be on, or the other positions that we may want to have represented on that council and what we want them to look like.
One point, too, and I think that inviting Haskell to the table is a great idea. As I mentioned, you know, the entities that were working so well together, you know, Haskell's still not on that list, and I wish it was, and I hope it can be, and so that may be a good opportunity to help bring them into the community a little bit more. And I think we've got a new administration there. It's a great opportunity now to start fresh and work on that. I think that's good. One balancing, I guess, act that we're going to have to go through is we have all of these people that we want to add to this group, and I think everybody knows my opinions on the effectiveness of groups versus the size of the groups. I think there's a definite inverse proportion or inverse relationship there to effectiveness. The more people we get, nor do we want to start chamber where we're having a couple of people. So, we've got to find that balance. It's going to be difficult, but we don't want this board to creep, or this council to creep away either and end up with 20 people on it, and nothing could ever possibly get accomplished.
Okay, does staff feel like we've given you enough direction here this evening to come back with information for us?
Yes, Mayor, I've taken quite a few notes here on your questions. So, I think what we'll do is just put together a list of the questions that we heard and some of the possible responses to that for your consideration, and we could bring that back to you at your meeting on the 22nd. I know that you don't have a meeting on the 29th, so that would be your preference as to when you would like to have that back from.
I think the 22nd is going to be kind of loaded up.
So, we could...
It may or may not be loaded. We can wait and see on that.
So, we could look at having it in early June.
Okay, any other comments?
I just want to thank them for the effort put forward in this proposal.
Thank you.
Yeah, a lot of work. Thank you.
Thanks to everybody that came down tonight to share their thoughts with us. And we'll, sorry. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next item on the agenda.
Public comment.
Okay, floor is open for public comment at this time.
Hi again, I'm Carrie Lindsay, President of the League of Women Voters, and I just wanted to announce that Kay Hale will be observing the city commission meetings. I sent some information to Mayor Shum and Mr. Corliss. I sent some information to Mayor Shum and Mr. Corliss. Observer Corps is actually how we sort of monitor open and transparent government. She's just here to observe. She won't ask any questions. Don't ask her any questions. She can't really answer. But thank you for allowing us the opportunity to come and observe and to watch you at your work. Thank you.
Thank you for awarding us someone to, to be here with us so we can interact with you better. So, any other comments? All right, back to the future agendas. Staff, anything on future agendas?
Mayor, I don't, I guess I don't have anything particular to highlight here, but you have a busy couple of meetings coming up with a number of items here for next week. And one thing I did want to also remind you of is your study session on the budget next Tuesday, which will be at 4:00 PM and not 3:00. So I wanted to make sure that you noted that time change on your calendars.
Okay. So it was 3:00, now it's going to be 4:00. Okay, anything else for calendar?
Sure.
All right.
Mayor, you were talking about the 22nd may be a pretty heavy agenda right now.
Depends if we are going to get the appeal from the HRC.
Is all of the information on the, the public financing, we're going to consider that at the same time, or is it just the HRC deal? Appeal?
I, I believe it's going to be considered all at one time.
Okay. Do we have all the information in from?
No.
No?
It has not been submitted yet to the consultant, but I understand that that was being worked on this week. I, I'm not sure of the time that the report will be ready, but we have indicated to the developer that we would like to make sure that we have that report prior to scheduling the item. I believe the mayor had indicated that as well.
Okay, very good.
Any commission items?
No, sir.
Are you all right? Entertained a motion to adjourn?